Good morning. We're going to call to order the Wilson County Commissioners Court. Today's date is Monday, December 23rd, and the time is 9:00 a.m. Where we start, we're going to have a prayer by Commissioner Aiken, then we'll have our pledge to our flags.
Morning, everyone. Father, we're grateful that we're able to come together in a capacity to be able to serve this fine county. Father, we hope that everything that we do is in the advancement of our county becoming a better place to live for all of its citizens. Father, we now want to reflect on the reason for this season. We know that there are so many who are focusing towards you and your son and the sacrifice that he made on the cross. The season is recognized as a time whenever he was born. Father, we know that every day we should be thinking about him and about the many blessings that you give to us. Father, we ask that in the days ahead, there are hearts be pure, and there are time on this earth is here to help serve in your son's name. Amen.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item number three, for the record, just show that we have a quorum, we have a full court, all commissioners are present. Move to item number three, we have a public comment, but that's for this item number six, and we'll let that public comment come on six. Okay? Agenda item number four, certificates and completion of awards. We have two certificates completions for fraternity opportunity program for Gail Ritchie and Genevieve Martinez. Those will go into the record. Agenda item number five, we have Mr. Raymond Arretta, Veterans Service Office, 2024-25 First Quarter Strategic Planning Review. Mr. Arretta, you have the floor.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners and attendees. We're here for our first quarter strategic planning review. It always brings me great privilege to be here and talk about the status and the growth that has happened within the department and what you Commissioners in the court have are providing to the community. Next slide. So I want to start with, of course, our mission. There might be some viewers on that might be watching, tuned in for the first time, or maybe somebody here present in person for the first time. I want them to understand what our goal is with our office, bridging the gap between military service members, veterans, and dependent benefits to maximize entitlements. When I say maximize, there's so many programs that are out there. It's like we cannot have enough, but it is our job within our department to provide those services to veterans and to try to find different avenues and to bridge that gap for them. And these services can happen with VA compensation, pension, appeals, survivors' benefits, burial benefits, state and local entitlements. FY 2023-2024, I have this in here because this is what's left. This is the residuals to last year. As you can see, I just want to really highlight what's open. We have 164 cases still open. These are veterans, surviving spouses, dependents, cases that are still opens, and that will trickle on into within this fiscal year, and we'll see that outcome. Next slide, please. Constituents assisted by precinct. Precinct two has always been the largest precinct of veterans that come into our office. Precinct three, right behind there. One and four, they kind of go hand in hand, they kind of, a little bit, not too many veterans come in from the area. We are still moving our events around throughout the county, so hopefully over the years we can see those numbers still raise. But the total is 163 within this fiscal year that we've already assisted. Next slide, please. Number of forms and claims by precinct. Forms, 207, and claims that we've already produced, generated, and submitted, 591. Again, this can be from VA disability compensation, healthcare, so on and so forth. Next slide, please. Today, we have a surviving spouse, Cynthia Mercado, and to provide her testimony. She is a surviving spouse, and we are privileged to have her. I just want to touch base on the events that led up to how we interacted for the services that we provided. So Ms. Mercado was referred to us by another success veteran that had with our office, and the first time we met, you know, she talked to me about her case, and I told her, you know, what the state allows or what the law allows, and it was not a very streamlined process. And I told her that upfront, it was going to be an uphill battle. And Ms. Mercado, I remember she was telling me, she's like, Ray, you know, I have faith. Let's go through with it. So every time we submitted a claim, we were denied. We were denied. We're denied maybe about three times, and every time we presented this case again, we attacked it differently. One thing about the VA is, most of the time, should I say, they will allow you the opportunity to present your case differently based off of what they addressed and why they denied it. So that's what we do. Every time we did, you know, on appeal, we provided more medical research. We provided legal research, precedent case law, and every time we were shot down. This is a case for a Vietnam veteran who was exposed to toxic herbicides and was not on a list of conditions that's normally recognized. So this is a different type of leukemia. Leukemia is part of it, but this specific type was not covered. And we had to jump through many challenges to ultimately get approved. So she did get approved for a program that's called Dependent Indemnity Compensation. This is the best program a surviving spouse can get. This is a program where the government offers to a spouse long after the veteran is gone for the rest of their lives, to include the recognition of the cause of death to the service, and that is the ultimate thing that we wanted to do. I remember Ms. Mercado, one thing she did tell me, she's like, Ray, this is not about the money at all. This is about the principle of the service contributing to the veteran's health conditions. So we have Ms. Mercado, if I may have her come up and just give a little bit more of her story and the veterans.
Good morning. Lower this a little bit. So I am here on behalf of my husband, William Mercado. And just a little background on his story, he was 27 years in the service. He was in, obviously, Vietnam, as many of our older veterans were, and also Green Beret and Special Forces, and considered a badass. In Vietnam, he was shot up and was medevaced out and had a very difficult time with his leg. And at that time, they said they'd probably never walk again, and he went on to be into airborne and Green Beret parachuting out. So this is a man that loved his career. And as things progressed, he, in 2019, came down with chronic leukemia. From there, we really didn't even know how these claims work, but someone suggested, you know, you need to do this, because he was at 50% disability because of his leg. It never changed from there, and each time he was denied. And each time he was denied because they said chronic leukemia was not part of the blood disease that the VA recognized. And then they said, if you get acute myeloid leukemia, yes, you will get 100%, and you'll be recognized. And that didn't happen. So then, another time, that didn't happen. Since then, he passed, and I was suggested from a neighbor to talk to Ray. And Ray was incredible with his help with what to do, because at that point, another claim had been in, and meantime, he had passed from acute myeloid leukemia, and it came back again, denied. So at that point, we decided, Ray said, he needs his own nexus letter. And a nexus letter is specifically designed for that veteran of how their medical needs were. And with that, you have to have research, you have to have medical opinion about, you know, exactly the Agent Orange, and this is what we were going after, that his condition of the leukemia came from Agent Orange. So he recommended a service that provides all of that background. And once we put this nexus letter together, that actually was service-related and shown, you know, specifically for that veteran, it finally came back approved. And they said, because of the persistence of your claims, and Leah, this is the woman that helped us, and she's, again, she was, she served in the military, and she's also a doctor, and she said, because of the information from Leah and also these claims that continually came in, we couldn't deny it anymore. And I can't thank Ray enough for his persistence and his guidance on this. And it isn't about, as Ray said, it isn't about what I'm entitled to know. This is about him. This is about, he's now service, his death was service-related, and that's what we want to see. And that also is going to help all these older veterans. Ideally, what we want is we want AML and MDS to be included in the listing of the blood diseases that were from Agent Orange, and that is our hope, that's what's happened. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Ray, I want to thank you. To the court here, Bill and I were very close friends. Good man. Some of the stories he told me were unbelievable. SF, actually came up through the ranks, he's a bootstrap guy, was enlisted, then he went through his officer candidate stuff. He's next door neighbor to my daughter and my son-in-law. He was an advisor to both of them, who are now at the Pentagon in Washington. So Cindy, you're still very much part of our family. Thank you for doing it.
And Judge, I just want to highlight, Ms. Mercado is dropping my name for our office, but I just want to point out that, Judge and the Commissioners, this is your doing. This is what you have allowed to happen, and I know that we will continue to progress and will always get better, representing Wilson County as a whole. Next slide, please. So we got a number of constituents by contact. So I have two different types here. I have one that resulted in action and one where we just made contact. That can include the ones that resulted in action and other ones where maybe we just advised over the phone or did referrals. So that resulted in action within this fiscal year has been 118. 103 of those by appointments, one by phone, 14 walk-ins, so we do take walk-ins. You know, we do have a pretty jam-packed schedule, but we do offer those opportunities for emergency cases and take in walk-ins on short notice. Interactions from VetPro. VetPro is a database that we use, a case management database, should I say. So phone calls, 257, emails, 105, in-person, 327. Every time that we have to tap into a veteran's file, whether it be an in-person appointment or I'm talking to your old phone, I document that. So that is why that in-person looks different. Fax, four, we do send still a few faxes here and there. Unspecified, it's just going to be a matter of labeling within our database, so those are just the four that may fall into the criteria right above. But a total of 705 interactions with the community this first quarter. New and returning and open and closed cases. So within this fiscal year already, we already have a total of 164 cases that have been handled. 156 of those are new. So I have a veteran that comes into the office, and we maybe, we assist him with some type of paperwork. We file that resulted in action, and then the veteran comes back for either an appeal or maybe filing new conditions. Through our process, when we sit down with a veteran, we kind of talk to them about, again, the opportunities and entitlements that they have. Sometimes, some of those we can address right away, and some of those, I like to say, we have to make a plan of action that we later attack. Open and closed cases within this fiscal year, so we have 121 still open and 43 have already been closed within this fiscal year. Next slide, please. Next, we have another testimonial. I first became aware of the Military Order of the Purple Heart out of San Antonio. They're actually one of the biggest Military Order of the Purple Heart chapters within the nation. And I did this when I was in a different county. And I went on my weekend one time and just to see what they're about and provide them and inform them about the services that a VSO can provide. Since then, I've built a great partnership with them. I was informed, this was about four years ago, I was informed that they had a service officer within their chapter that would provide the services that, you know, similar to our office. And they had lost that service officer way back then. So I've made it a point to really provide those services to the veterans of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, to make sure, I believe all veterans are, I guess, worthy of the services, right? If you serve your country, but even more so those that were injured in combat and have, you know, our recipients of Purple Heart is very dear to my heart. So first time I met, our next testimonial is Porfirio Quesada. He was the commander at the Military Order of the Purple Heart at the time. And throughout, I guess, time, I've seen his health deteriorate. And again, this is, again, due to Agent Orange, toxic herbicide exposure in Vietnam. And I was shocked to know that there's many veterans that are combat veterans and who have Purple Heart. Purple Heart is...
Hang on a second. Oh, there changed the battery.
Coming in clutch, as always. Thank you. I was shocked to find out of how many Purple Heart recipients are not receiving some type of service-connected condition or have been receiving a lack of services. So with that, I just want to bring our Mr. Porfirio Quesada, who is a Purple Heart recipient and a member of the Military Order of the Purple Heart.
Thank you, Ray. Porfirio is the name, but you can call me Tony. It's a lot easier. Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing me to be here this morning, and thank you, Ray, for the invitation. I appreciate it. Some years ago, somebody walked by my house and saw that I had a Purple Heart license on my truck. And he stopped by, he says, are you a Purple Heart recipient? And I said, yes, I am. He said, you are not a member of our organization. And I said, what is that? Is it Purple Heart? It was new to me. I have had the Purple Heart for many years, but I never paid attention to those things that we, as veterans, sometimes go through in life. We are, we have families growing, young kids at home, wives and house responsibilities and all kinds of things, and we dedicate ourselves to do whatever we need to do at that time. It is not until later on, when we start getting wrinkles and gray hair and things start failing, that we start saying, okay, well, let me see what I can do about this and what I can do about that. So it took some people along the way to sort of push me to get to work in getting some benefits that were due to me. And along came Ray, and, man, he is a miracle worker. As a matter of fact, I think just about every county in Texas should be envious of what this man does for veterans. He was working hard in San Antonio, and obviously, he came over to Wilson County to do great things. I have some issues that I probably should have paid attention a long time ago, but I didn't. Alongside came Ray, and lo and behold, that man got things moving. So it took, I don't know how long it took, but he eventually was able to do things that I never thought were going to be possible. And I don't know how long ago it was, a few months ago, when finally, I got the call saying that I was 100% eligibility, or whatever you call that thing. So it has been a blessing. And obviously, as a spouse, my wife has benefited from it, and she will continue to benefit after I pass. She doesn't like for me to say that, but I'm almost certain that I'm going to pass before she does. She's just tough as nails. As a matter of fact, she fell this morning coming out of my house. She's all bruised up, but that is the way she is. She's a tough cookie. So bottom line, what the VA has done, for me, has been a result of Ray's efforts. And I am sure that he will continue to do just that kind of effort for everybody else that comes along. Now, if I can take my, just a couple of minutes, as a member of the Purple Heart, for those of you who know, that is, we have Fiesta Texas in San Antonio. I mean, Fiesta Texas in San Antonio. We have Fiesta Week in San Antonio coming up in April, and we have been promoting this for years. And every year, we produce a brand-new Fiesta Week medal. And if I may, Ray, if you help me with this, I have one for you and one for this gentleman. Please present them on behalf of our Purple Heart, 1836, the largest chapter in the nation is ours. We have about 800 members in our chapter, and we depend on people's help to keep us afloat, and we try, which our mission is, try to help veterans across the board, continuing on his mission. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity that you have given me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quesada.
Judge, can we get a picture with the Purple Heart recipient, please?
Actually, if we can get our surviving spouse to work, because her husband was also a military Purple Heart recipient. Judge and Commissioners, I think that is one of the best parts about our strategic planning review, is being able to hear those testimonials. I hear them every day. I get to really invest in the relationships and building, getting to know their families, their health conditions, and it gets quite personal. Our office, I like to see, I like to say, sees veterans and their families through the veteran life cycle, coming out of the service, you know, through going, being employed, to laying them to rest, and being able to service them, their families, even long after they're gone. And that's probably the only part about my, the position and working within the office is having to live through the relationships. Also, it's really important for me, again, to highlight, this is what you guys are providing to the community. This is your impact, and we appreciate your support and the continued support for the future. And with that, I just want to move on to our next portion of our presentation, which is return on investment. Within this first quarter, or let me backtrack, we've been able to work off of a year since the change in our department. And this is a lot of the outcome from one year rolling on to the next fiscal year. So, and I have that date wrong, 2023 to 2024. It should be 2024 to 2025. Within the first quarter, we've already secured, or Wilson County already has assisted veterans secure a little over 1 million within the first quarter. And although that's a great number, I think a balance of that and our testimonies shows a true fact of the success of the department and our office and what you guys are providing to Wilson County. So we've already exceeded our department budget by 840%. Our end of the year last year, we had a target goal of 1.5 within this fiscal year. Last year was our budget, so we bumped it up to 1.5, and as you can see, we've already almost 60% have completed our goal. And I foresee, I'll see, probably within the next quarter, to exceed that goal already. Goals, challenges, and vision. So some goals is invest in existing and potential partnerships and veteran-related organizations that align with our current dynamics. We have many partnerships. Our success is because of our partnerships, and we're constantly looking for partnerships that align with our current dynamics of our office, and that is always going to change. Last year, we were a one-person office, and this year, we're now, with your guys' support, we are a two-person office. And I just want to highlight our new employee, Mrs. Kylie Daniels. She is pretty remarkable. We had some very, very good applicants, and I'm glad that we made the decision we did, and I know that she will provide even more further in the future if allowed. So other goals, implement ongoing training and procedures to better case manage. Again, with our new employee, we're able to change things around. She now covers the phones and the calendar, which everybody's used to calling and getting an answer from me, and they just want to speak to me. But, you know, just incorporating new procedures, letting them know, hey, like, we have changes within the department and things are for the better. You know, so we just ask that our community and people that are receiving services from our office, you know, please be patient, because all the procedures and the changes are for their benefit of Wilson County. Branding and marketing, we continue to do that. And, uh, with that, we will bring on hopefully two personnel on a, on a part-time basis, really working around their schedule, their schooling, just to offer them, um, the opportunity to engage with veterans within Wilson County and see what our office is about. And who, who knows, maybe in the future, uh, become a part of our department. Uh, challenges, uh, canceled and rescheduled appointments. I would have thought, I would assume in theory that, you know, bringing on another person that this number would go down. And that's not necessarily the case. One, uh, our position is a part-time position, so they're not here all the time to answer those phones. To include people, life happens. And to be honest, uh, around the holidays is where I see most canceling and rescheduling. Um, so our number hasn't really much dwindled from the prior, uh, presentations. Uh, we're averaging around twenty, uh, a quarter. Uh, confidentiality and space and dynamics, again, this goes with the goals and growing, uh, currently in our, uh, with Kylie's, uh, position, uh, she is not just a, a, um, a receptionist, although that is just a part of the duty. She is very engaging and, and incorporating a, a now intake process. And a lot of this has to do in a confined area where, where confidentiality is important. Uh, right now we are housed, uh, we have Kylie in a more common area. So, and this is people from the county that are walking in and other departments. So we are very, um, I guess, uh, we take an importance of the confidentiality, so we don't really talk about much things, but when we have Kylie in a different area, which is already in the future plans, uh, we know that she can incorporate more, uh, of the, uh, the background and the reasons why we, we hired Mrs. Kylie. Uh, time availability for training of new personnel. With a jam-packed schedule and, and even with our, our new employee, uh, there's times where we don't still have enough time to engage, uh, and look at, you know, training for our new personnel and oncoming personnel. But that's something that we are planning in the future. We set time aside, uh, but granted with more a, uh, full-time schedule, that is something more we can address. Vision, so a self-sustaining streamlined depart, uh, Veterans Department Service. This has been happening since day one. Everything that we have planned and asked for is only to help our Veterans Department to assist the community and the veteran community within Wilson County. Um, adequate department services, uh, our growing veteran population. I looked at another number the other day and it was, I think, right under five thousand, uh, from one year to the next. So this can, can, continue to grow. And I know, I still don't agree that those numbers are completely accurate as far as, I think it's downplaying what we actually have. Um, but I just want to bring, always raise that attention that we are a growing population. People love Wilson County. People love the country and they are moving out here. Uh, department availability to offer more accessible services, uh, services, we are doing that, just like with the VA, uh, our, uh, TVC grant if approved and other things with personnel and manning available, we are able to provide better and more adequate That concludes my presentation. I just want to thank you guys for your time and, uh, happy holidays.
Ray, you're doing a great job. You always impress me. So, um, commissioners, y'all have anything to say to Ray?
Keep him, great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ray. We moved to agenda item number six. I'm sorry, yes. Brenda Threvenia County honor to discuss possible action on renewal contract with EMS Strategy Group LLC, which is set to expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. But we have one public comment for agenda item number six. Ms. Kibbe, you have the floor, ma'am.
As y'all are all aware, I try to make most of the meetings. I miss most of the special ones because I don't realize they're happening until they've already happened. But I've been watching and it seems to me that for the last year, we've been paying this firm to, to acquire grants for the county. And so far that investment has paid off with nothing. Not one grant. Now, if I'm mistaken, please let me know. As most of you know, I used to do the grant business and I did it on a different setup. I got paid, once I was bringing the money in. I actually did all the application stuff for free, including paying for the newspaper ads. Okay? I did all of that for free. Then I was, then I was contracted with to do the administrative work, which I did some grants here at the county, to the point that I did all of the work except for signing the places that somebody else had to sign and actually writing the checks. But even then, I would give both the auditor and the treasurer's office a memo that says, when this money shows up, this is what you pay and a copy of the invoices that it was covering. I find the, this contract to be a waste of Wilson County taxpayers' money because it's not producing what it needs to produce and yet we're paying for it as though it was. And so I think that renewing this contract is not in the best interest of the taxpayers of Wilson County.
Commissioners and judge, um, the current contract that we have with EMC Strategy Group LLC is set to expire, uh, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. If you remember last year, uh, we signed a twelve-month agreement, um, and I wanted to bring it to the court's attention, uh, before we get to the expiration date. Um, you did receive a, um, just as a reminder, it was addressed to you, um, but I went ahead and printed it out. You did receive a renewal request, uh, letter from EMC, I believe last week, Friday. Um, and so if you don't have a copy, I've got a copy of it, uh, for you. So if you have any, uh, questions, the, uh, it appears that the, um, we have been paying a five thousand five hundred dollars a month for a total of sixty-six thousand dollars a year. Um, in addition, uh, we did have EMC Strategy Group, uh, work on a grant for us. Um, it wasn't the competitive grant, it was the ACOG. If you remember, the, uh, GLO, uh, allocation that the county received or was allocated of one point two million. Uh, because it was not a competitive grant, we came to an agreement and asked them rather, uh, than, uh, them receiving the five percent administrative fee of the total amount of war, of award if they would bill us on an hourly rate to help, uh, write the narrative, uh, to which they did. Um, and so, uh, we received that invoice. Um, we are in the process of negotiating that invoice. But outside of that, their monthly fee remains for the new fiscal year. Uh, monthly service fee during the term of this agree, agreement would be the county agrees to pay EMC a service fee in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars a month, uh, with a five percent administrative fee, um, as authorized as compensation for assisting the county in administration and compliance of grants. So you also have a copy of that as well. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, representative here, Mr. Gonzalez, would you like to address the court, sir?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners and staff. Um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the court today. Uh, the letter that I submitted to you all on Friday, uh, was a request and also, uh, a timeline of the activity that EMC has done since being brought on board, uh, on February the first of twenty twenty-four. Um, one of the things I, I think it's very important that I remind everybody is that EMC Strategy Group is not a grant-writing firm. EMC is a state and federal lobbying firm. We provide technical assistance to our clients with the completion and submission of funding requests. And funding requests could be a congressional earmark, uh, community project funding request, a loan, a grant. So we are not GrantWorks, we're not Livingston. They, they're really good at what they do, uh, but I think that we're pretty good about, of what we do in terms of the government relations at the state and federal level. Uh, one of the things that I did highlight here again was a timeline of the things that we have done since we were brought on board. Uh, my first introduction to the judge was, uh, this time last year when we took a trip to Washington DC and, uh, we did a roundabout. And one of the meetings that we did have was at the Veterans Administration Headquarters across the street from the White House. Um, that later produced, um, a visit by the Veterans Benefits Administration, uh, in, in May, um, across the street over at the American Legion. Uh, I do want to highlight, uh, these dates that I did list. So on February first, after the commissioners' court approved our contract, we visited with the judge and his leadership team. We went over the local priorities and the county's projects that allowed us to come up with an idea of the state and federal agencies that we needed to do to reach out and also gave us the opportunity to work with Brenda and her team, uh, for the completion of the narrative for the GLO grant that she made reference to. Uh, that was done in March. Um, in April, we, uh, coordinated a day trip to Austin, Texas, where we did a roundabout with, not only with our state representative, Ryan Guian, uh, but also the key, um, state agencies that are relevant to local priorities. That included a visit with TechDOT, uh, the Texas Workforce Commission and Texas Department of Agriculture and the Governor's Office of Economic Development. Again, I know there was reference to grants, but this is the government relations outreach that the EMC Strategy Group was contracted to do. In May, uh, on the, May twenty-ninth, we had a visit from VBA, the Veterans Benefits Administration over at the American Legion across, uh, across the market, uh, area. And then on, um, July, or actually June, uh, we led the first Wilson County Florisville, uh, DC trip. And, uh, it was a good trip where we met with a lot of federal agencies and also key members of Congress. Um, we got to share the story, uh, Wilson County as a whole. And, and that was a great collaborative effort between the county, the city and economic development corporation. Um, in August, we had a visit with, uh, the TechDOT San Antonio District Engineer, um, Charles Benavides. Again, not a grant, but the government relations that EMC was hired to do. September, uh, we came in and did a prep with the judge on a legislative workshop, which I believe most of the commissioners here attended, uh, that we had later in October. That, um, that legislative workshop, or the, yeah, the legislative workshop was the first that the county had done and invited multiple stakeholders that included cities, chambers of commerce, economic development corporations, the community college, um, and a lot of other business stakeholders. It was very successful, it was very well-attended. We had about sixty-five, uh, people from throughout the county attend that workshop. Um, and that, the idea again was to gather input from the constituents so that as we do our job, leading up to the upcoming legislative session, which begins on January the fourteenth, that we've got to organize game plan on at least the local top priorities. Um, and so I think it was very well-attended and very well-executed. Um, in, on September twenty-sixth, we brought in a federal agency here to support local business owners to become aware on how to compete for, um, federal contracts. And that's the General Services Administration. Uh, in October, um, the city of Florisville and the Florisville, Florisville Economic Development Corporation, um, held a regional economic development forum. Our team was the one that organized that. Even though it was not a county event, we did invite county officials to participate and we had people from the governor's office, uh, from the Texas Workforce Commission, uh, the governor's office of economic development, TechDOT. We even brought in one of the newest members of the Texas Transportation Commission, Alex Mead, and he participated in that event. Um, and that was on October the fifteenth. Uh, in November the third, on November the thirteenth, my team and I came in here, we visit with the judge. Basically, our review also planted the seed for twenty twenty-five, talking about the upcoming priorities. We made reference to the Austin trips, the DC trips. And so there was a lot of ground that we covered. We've only been, uh, employed with the county since February the first. And when I did my initial presentation here before the court, I had always mentioned that it takes twenty-six to thirty-six, twenty-four to thirty-six months for us to effectively do our job. It's lobbying, it's building relationships. Now, we had a, a forty-five minute meeting with Senator Ted Cruz when we did our initial trip before we were hired with the county. Well, Senator Cruz just got named over the weekend, the chairman of the Senate Commerce Committee and the Senate Transportation Committee. Those are the two most important committees in the United States Senate. Now, the judge and I have talked a lot about the development of the Pierce-Saw Shale. Once that happened, and we know that in the incoming administration, they're pro-energy, they're pro deregulation, there will be drilling. There will be the exploration of more oil and energy. That's going to be great for the community or for the region because it's going to create a hundred and eighty thousand dollar jobs of people that are working in the oil field. With those trucks, once the trucks start coming in, you know what that's going to do to your roads? If the roads are challenged now, think about what they're going to look like in twenty-four months or thirty-six months or four years. It's going to take some serious, serious infrastructure dollars in the millions and millions of dollars. That money's going to come from DC to TechDOT and it's important for us to continue to make that case whether or not we're doing the Austin days in the spring, the DC trips to, to continue to sell and share the story of the need for greater infrastructure. With all due respect to the, the lady that spoke earlier, again, I, I want to reemphasize, EMC Strategy Group is not a grant-writing firm. We're a state and federal lobbying firm. We will provide services and outreach to every state and federal agency and we will support the county staff in the completion and submission of funding requests. The bigger dollars that we're looking after is earmarks, appropriations requests, not seventy-five thousand dollar grants, not a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. We want to go over the million-dollar grants on up. And it's going to take those relationships, those visits to Austin, DC to make that happen. Uh, now, we're always looking for good grant, grant writers if they want to work for us. Uh, we've hired three in the last year and we're going to continue to look for talent. And by the way, I like Ray, by the way. Ray's a sharp guy and, uh, certainly stood out today. But I want to thank you all very much for the consideration. I did put on the last page, some of the highlights that we're looking at, um, leading into this next year. Number one, we've got new members of Congress that are being sworn in on January the second. We're going to also participate in the Texas legislative session on day one on January the fourteenth. We will attend the presidential inauguration on January twentieth and certainly it would be great if people from the county are interested in participating in that. The Congresswoman's office has made available tickets. Uh, you just got to get yourself there. On January twenty-third, we're going to participate with a hundred and fifty state legislators in the Rio Grande Valley, the RGV Partnership down in the Rio Grande Valley. Uh, we are proposing, I know that's across the street, the city and the EDC, uh, we've already set the dates for the, um, legislative days in Austin and that's on February the eleventh and twelfth. Uh, I spoke to the judge and I think it's important that, um, the county obviously provide, um, some serious leadership when it comes to that and participate in that. We will provide services and outreach to every state and federal agency, and we will support the county staff in the completion and submission of funding requests. The bigger dollars that we're looking after is earmarks, appropriations requests, not $75,000 grants, not $150,000 grant. We want to go over the million-dollar grants on up, and it's going to take those relationships, those visits to Austin and DC to make that happen. Now, we're always looking for good grant writers if they want to work for us. We've hired three in the last year, and we're going to continue to look for talent. And by the way, I like Ray, by the way. Ray's a sharp guy and certainly stood out today. But I want to thank you all very much for the consideration. I did put on the last page some of the highlights that we're looking at leading into this next year. Number one, we've got new members of Congress that are being sworn in on January the 2nd. We're going to also participate in the Texas Legislative Session on Day One on January the 14th. We will attend the presidential inauguration on January 20th, and certainly it would be great if people from the county are interested in participating in that. The Congresswoman's Office has made available tickets. You've just got to get yourself there. On January 23rd, we're going to participate with 150 state legislators in the Rio Grande Valley, the RGV Partnership down in the Rio Grande Valley. We are proposing, I know that across the street, the city and the EDC, we've already set the dates for the legislative days in Austin, and that's on February the 11th and 12th. I spoke to the judge, and I think it's important that the county obviously provide some serious leadership when it comes to that and participate in that event. And then we've already begun the outreach and the scheduling for the Florisville Spring Washington DC trip on February the 17th through the 20th. Again, we'd like for the county to take the lead as a top local government in the area so that we could, again, sell the story. And I want to give you all the, thank you all very much for giving us the opportunity to represent you over the last several months. We haven't completed, we have not completed our year, but I do thank Brenda for reminding the judge that, you know, we had a contract that was expiring on January 31st, and so we're taking the lead, we're following the process. And no client that we've ever represented, I've been doing lobbying for about 20 years. It took some time to get that stuff happening. It takes those sit downs with legislators at the state and federal level. So thank you all very much, and we appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions for him?
We all do.
Okay.
So my first question is, whatever happened with this RISE grant? We can't seem to get an update or anything, RISE or RISE or PROTEC. I don't know what grant it was we applied for, but all the update that we've gotten is that it's sitting, it's been received at the federal level since January of this year.
Unfortunately, it is a competitive grant. Unfortunately, it was not funded. Wilson County was not awarded the grant. We had, we did have a communication with Brenda on, not Brenda, but Kayla, which she had asked us to look into it. We did look into it, we saw that it was not funded. Highly competitive grant. This was our first go at it, and, you know, we put a lot of man-hours into gathering information and do appreciate the precincts that did participate in that one, two, and four. It's just one of those things that we got to keep on applying for. Case in point, City of Pleasanton put in a COPS grant for the Department of Justice to get some new officers. It took us on the third round of requests for funding to get the grant funded. Some of those things take time, and it doesn't, you know, we wanted to, we always want to get on the first try, but we want to keep on trying.
And so I know a lot of times there's combination trips with us in Florisville or Atosco County or whomever. So who pays for your trip? You're part of the trip.
That's a good question. So in the trip that we took last year or this year in June, nobody paid for it. EMC did not bill either the city, the EDC, or the county for that trip. So we ate the trip. But traditionally, and moving forward, whenever we do take a trip, it's a combination of we either split the request for reimbursement, or if one of the agencies that we represent is going to take that trip and the others won't, then we'll bill that agency. But the EMC Strategy Group did not bill either the city, the EDC, or the county for the trip that we took in June.
Okay. Thank you. So, let me water. You stated that you're not a grant writing firm, you're lobbyist. I don't believe whenever we enacted our agreement that that was, I perceived, I believed that we were getting help with grant writing and an agency that would push us into getting, no money is free, but all money that we paid in taxes, we'd like to get as much back into Wilson County as possible. And so the relationship you just described versus the relationship I thought I was voting on entering in seems to be different because that's what I thought we were getting was somebody to take and push us forward in grant writing. Second thing is, your wife and I spoke at great length at the conference right after the judge and the auditor went. Whenever we were passed over, March 28, 2024 is what you have in your paperwork here on the funding. You know, y'all were unaware up until the date that that happened that we weren't getting that, and we were of the mindset that we were. I kind of think my perception of what you're supposed to be doing, that's exactly what we were expecting you to help us take and get, and then it disappeared. Now, I understand the reasoning that the Congresswoman may have done that because she was in a heated race, and I believe she'll always be in a heated race. There will always be competition at that level. But the funding went to the southern counties and didn't come to the northern counties. And that was a big disappointment for me, not just for Wilson County, but because we had a team take and go expecting to be able to bring something home, and then it didn't happen. I mean, I get it, you're in business and you're running a business, and I understand that you have the history to where you go, this is how we can take and be efficient. And I know that you came to us with a three-year contract whenever you came to us. And we go, no, we want to try it for 12 months to see how it works. We haven't seen any fruits. And that is hard for me anyways, I don't know about the rest of the court, to justify any extensions at this point.
I'd like to address the two items.
Sure.
One about the grants. So on our agreement that we signed last year, there is reference to grants. And on Section B, it does talk about how EMC would research state and federal funding opportunities, grants, programs, cooperative agreements. It also says that we would assist in the submission of the applications. So, you know, it is one of the services that we provide, but it's not the top service that we provide. The top service is the government relations, but we do provide the assistance and the research for the grants. Grants, one of the things I always tell my team is that we don't want to promise the award of grants because it's competitive. And so there's a lot of other people that are, have already begun the relationship process to sell their story, develop a shovel-ready project that is going to capture the attention of the grant reader. There hasn't been every case where we submit a grant and we get on the first try. Sometimes it does take two or three rounds. As a firm, we've also learned what grants we're most successful with and what ones we're not. With respect to the RISE grant, they had been the first RISE grant that we had ever participated in. We had more success with the public safety grants with Texas Parks and Wildlife. There are some grants that we don't have the experience to successfully say that we can knock out that grant, and, you know, we feel very confident about it. Case in point is the community block development grants. That's one of the grants that we actually refer out. Whenever we get approached to do a CDVG grant, we don't have the skill set for that. And I'm not going to, you know, lie to somebody and let them know that, you know, that we have the experience and produce those grants. We'll refer those to Grant Works or people that, you know, that do have the experience. But we will assist whenever we have a project, and if we have the skill set, then we will work with a team from the county to gather the information and fill out the application. I understand the frustration because you've got to answer the constituents. But when you look at the total amount of work that we've done on the government relations part, there's been a lot of touches. Almost every single month, we're working on something that's government relations, state or federal, as outreach on behalf of the county. We haven't been on the job for not even a year. If we came on board on February the first, we actually started doing real work in March when we started assisting, you know, with the RISE grant and the GLO grant. And so I think in terms of time, you know, things do take a little time. You made reference also to the community project funding request with the Congresswoman's office. You're right, she had a very contested race. I think everybody can agree that every race nationally was very hot. And so priorities had to be shifted from, you know, multi-use community buildings to border security. We know we got a border security issue, that's where a lot of the money went. Now, not all of it, but a good chunk. And one of the things that, you know, Brenda shared with me in frustration in conversation was that, that was noticed that a lot of the money went to the southern part of the congressional district. The southern part of the congressional district is the one that determines a lot of the outcome, at least early on in the vote. And the southern part of her congressional district was where a lot of the funds went to. However, this is an off year. Fiscal year 2026 community project funding requests opened up in March. We've already told Truman Reed, the Legislative Director, and now the new Assistant Chief of the Congresswoman, that the county has every intention to put forward again a request to mirror the request that was submitted last time, and with better hopes of getting, you know, funding. And because we're not in an election year, we will be in 24 months, but this year's not an election year leading up. So there's an opportunity for the northern part of the congressional district to capture some appropriated dollars. I hope I answered that as best I could.
The problem that I have is, is that if we do this again and do this again, in three years' time, we're going to have $200,000 invested. And, you know, if you brought the county a million and a half dollars, it would be easy to be able to take and describe our relationship to the public. Right now, it's not very easy.
Absolutely. One of the things that we all need to just be aware of is that the new legislative session begins in just a few weeks. And every state, every county, and every city, and every local government special district is going to be lobbying the state legislature to get funds for the next year's budget, and it's going to be those that have a seat around the table that are going to be heard. And that's going to take a combination, not only my team, but the storytelling of the elected officials for the county. In order for me to be effective, I got to go with the judge, I got to go with the county Commissioners, and we got to sit down with the various state representatives from throughout the state, at the state Capitol, and sell the story. And there's going to be legislation that's going to come up that, you know, maybe of great interest to the county. We get our resources, just like you do from the Texas Association of Counties and Texas Municipal League, and we are prepared to fight any legislation that will hamper the county's ability to govern. So there's a lot of things at stake legislative-wise, at state and federal level. With the new administration coming in, there's going to be a lot of opportunity for economic development. There's going to be a lot of opportunity for infrastructure money, and it takes organization and representation in DC and Austin to capture some of those resources.
I guess I'm like Commissioner Aiken. I was under the understanding that y'all would help us get grants. I went to Kayla downstairs and told her I was interested in a TARP program for an old hot oil truck or distributor truck, and she told me that she referred that to EMC, so am I confused somewhere? I mean, are we doing grants or are they doing grants? So in other words, this grant that she said she referred to EMC is, nothing has happened on it, it was wasted time?
Are you asking me, Commissioner?
Well.
I mean, I can give you my, I can give you my perception because my understanding from a year ago is that EMC Strategy was being hired, kind of like what Commissioner Aiken said, to help my office, to help Kayla research grants and write grants as needed by the county. We had a meeting, once the contract started, we had a meeting with EMC Strategy where we outlined a plan that if any official or department had a request or seeking grant funding, you would email Kayla, copy me, and then we would forward that to EMC Strategy to do the research, find out if there are grants out there. Now, whether or not they're doing the research and responding, that would have, that would be an answer that would need to come from them. I do know that it has been our experience that, and I don't, certainly don't want to speak for Kayla, but in our, my conversations with Kayla, I will follow up with her, asking, did we get a response from EMC on the research of XYZ grant? And to which she'll forward a response that says, we're looking, we're looking into it. But in terms of an outcome, I haven't seen any.
I'm just saying that I went to her, and she said, no, I don't do that. I referred it to EMC, and now EMC's standing here telling me they don't do that, so evidently nobody's doing it.
Well, we do do, we will do the research, and we will help in the submission of the application. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that we weren't just a grant writing firm, that there's other services that we provide. You know, if there's a grant that we will, that we are experienced with, or we feel that we have the ability to do, we will write that grant. And I'll give you an example. During the last go-around of the COPS grants, I reached out to your sheriff, and there was a COPS grant that came up, and we discussed, you know, whether or not we should put in for that. And we discussed about possible resource officers. We had several communications with not only the sheriff, but the county judge. At that point, we decided that collectively, that the county would explore an opportunity in the next go-around. And so that was one example of a public safety grant that we identified, researched, and brought the information forward. We didn't apply for it because it was, decided not to. But we also discussed about a courthouse revitalization grant. And, you know, the courthouse revitalization grant, basically, it's through the state of Texas, where if awarded, the county would basically gut the county courthouse and rebuild it, refurbish it.
Ernie, if I may, I just, I wanted, before I lose my train of thought, but in response to what Commissioner Perdola is saying, and so this is just an example, Kayla did email you and Janice, and this was back on September 18th, about Precinct 3 Commissioner Perdola wanting to apply for two, two and a half ton trucks for hot oil distribution. TARP is who we were able to get the trucks through last time, and she never received a response from you guys. And so I believe that's what Commissioner Perdola is referring to in terms of when we have, and this is just one example, when we have reached out to your firm to do research for us, because that is one of the things that I came to the court to say, we, me and Kayla don't have the time to sit and research all of these grants, that's what we're expecting your firm to do, and then we're not getting, she didn't get a response to that. So I just wanted to address Commissioner Perdola's response because I needed to look through my email.
And I'd like to say this right now. You know, I don't think we're at a point where we really need you, I'm not sure. We haven't really put a plan together of what we, what we need to do. Because I think we need the advice of a good grant writer to tell us, what can we go for? Who do we need to be talking to, are these state grants or these federal grants? What are our chances? Because we're talking, we need to be talking to the people that do this every day, and they know the system. Like, you know, any one of us can pretty much get ahold of Mr. Guillen anytime we need him. And he's been wonderful in our assistance. And Ms. De La Cruz, I mean, challenged with that, understand why it happened. I would have preferred that you would have known that, and y'all wouldn't have gone on the trip before you ever even left. But I understand how these things work, all right? I mean, I didn't fall off the turnip truck, and I certainly hadn't been driving one for a few years. But I did this for 35 years, different projects, big projects, little projects. It was very complicated. And I just, I'm not sure, guys, we're where we need to be. I think we need to sit, sit back and come up with a strategic plan of how we want to do this stuff and what we really want to go after. I mean, honestly, I don't think we can ever get a road grant because we're not a city. There's too much fluff on the sides that they want. They want sidewalks, they want streetlights, they want more connectivity, they want this, they want that. We can't do that, that's not our problem. We need somebody to tell us what realistically can we apply for and get, and then we have to figure out, is that what we want, and then we need to go after. And we know, it takes, sometimes it takes a couple, three cycles, four cycles on these grants. And the same people that evaluate them on day one are not the same ones that evaluate them two years later in a lot of cases. So it's very, it's very difficult, it's very challenging, it's very frustrating. And so that's my two cents.
I'm going to go off of what Commissioner Aiken talked about, you know, we'll spend $180,000, $200,000 in three years before we get any return on investment. That's a big problem for me. I can put $180,000 on the road and not get a quarter of a mile. That's a lot of money for us. So if we're not getting return on investment, I got it, you've been here for 11 months, got one month left. But we haven't seen anything back on our time. I've sat in Brenda's office, I've sat down with Kayla several times. I've taken a lot of time out of my day for the grant because it's important to me because this county can only afford so much. So it doesn't matter where we're at, there's a lot of communication, and yes, I thought that y'all are part of a grant firm as well because we did go out, then we had y'all come in, right? So that was a big thing for me. Not only $5,000, $500, what is y'all's hourly rate whenever we're doing this stuff, you know? That's quite a bit for me as well. So when we're spending that type of money on a company that we are looking for something back on, we have zero as of today. we are looking for something back on, and we have zero as of today, that's a, that's a hard bargain for me to come back and say, yes, sir, please come back. All right? And then, then an hourly, hourly rate right on top of that. So we've got to find something, and, and I agree with Commissioner Martin on that, is we've got to find, we've got to sit down, rack our brains, what we want, what we need, what's going to better this county and each precinct as well.
If I may, so we've been on the job for nine months, basically. Not, not the full year, nine to 10 months after March the 1st. I, I'm hearing all the concerns. I'm hearing the concerns about the grants, and, you know, you all thought we were a grant-writing firm only, and that the communication hasn't always been, you know, immediately responded to. And Commissioner, I'll, I'll own that, that our firm did not respond to the request that was asked in September. I think that the way our contract is written, the one that was presented, it allows for an escape clause. So that if the, the Commissioners' Court were inclined to approve our request, it's a 12-month request, and, and we don't do 12-month contracts. All of our contracts are three-year contracts, every single one except this one. So we understand the trial period. But there's also a way out, you know, clause. So that if the County Commissioners' Court approved us for the next 12 months, you know, leading into the contract, if we're not doing what we said that we were going to do, then you can always, you know, terminate that contract with 120 days notification. You're not doing the job, or come on in, let's have a, you know, a performance improvement program, which we haven't, we have not had that. But if we did get renewed, I will tell you that one of the things that we would do is communicate with all of you on a regular basis, monthly. Sit down, let's talk about what you've got going on, what we can actually help you with. And then after that conversation, if we feel that, you know, we can apply for a grant that meets your needs, then we can work with Brenda and her team to submit an application request. So communication, obviously, is going to be, needs to be improved. There's also a way out, and as was mentioned before, our annual fee is $6,600, $66,000. So, and then there is a 5% if we secure the funding. And that's usually worked into the budget of the request. So, you know, is it an investment? Absolutely. Is there work being done? Yes, there is. Do we all want results, like cash in hand, checks being awarded? Absolutely. We want to do that. And we're committed to continue to write the grants, to support the county in its efforts to get additional dollars, state or federal, or even private foundation. We just want to get, be given the same chance that every other client that gives us, the opportunity to apply for those funding opportunities. And then improve on our communication, so that we don't have an experience that we had with the Commissioner about not getting the feedback. I think that would be eliminated by having the direct sit downs once a month with you, each of you, and work on a game plan for each of your precincts. And I think that if we're given the opportunity to do that, we can do a mid-year review where I come in and talk about the conversations that we have, what we've applied for. That way, there's more dialogue and better communication. Any issues that need to be brought up, we address them. We want to earn your business and earn your trust. And we're hoping that we can get another shot to do that. And my commitment is, it's going to be the improved communication.
Are y'all asking for another 12-year contract or a three-year contract?
12-year.
It's a 12-month. But, you know, the 12-month, though, is, no, no 12-years. It's 12 months.
Okay.
But gentlemen, there is, again, an escape clause. If going into the contract six months down the road, we're not doing it, then somebody can put it on the agenda to have the contract reviewed and, and, you know, possible termination. But that is, there is an escape clause on the application that we wrote into that.
For you and Mrs. Trevino, how many active grants are we working on right now, your, your organization, Wilson County?
Right now, we have just the GLO that, you know, her team put in. We provided assistance. The county is just waiting to receive the go-ahead from the Texas General Land Office that hears the funds.
You found out that we didn't get the RACE grant when?
We found that we, you didn't get the RACE grant about four weeks ago online.
Okay.
There was no notification of denial that says you all did not receive the funds.
They just, you, you...
You have to go online.
Check it every day, and then finally, there's a change on it, or however often you check it.
That's correct. Now, there's some agencies where you get the automatic notification. Like if we would have gotten the COPS grant, we get the congratulations packet and email, and you've got to log into the system to accept that. That, the case in the, the RACE grant, there was no rejection letter that we received, and to my knowledge, the county didn't receive a rejection letter either. It was post-online.
And finally, any way you would move to success-based percentages rather than a monthly stipend?
Unfortunately, with our nature of work, it's the amount of work that we put into hours, we've got to pay salary, we've got overhead, and so we can't operate on a, on a commission-based.
And I believe, I don't want to speak out of turn, Ernie, but I believe that's what the 5% administrative fee is of after, if we were to, if we were to be awarded a grant, you know, a million-dollar grant, then we would have to turn around and pay them the 5% of that million dollars as their success for completing that.
But there are other entities that work off of performance-based and percentages after...
Yeah.
And the percentages are significantly higher.
They're significantly higher, but they're tied to receiving something.
Right.
So...
One of the things, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to also, one thing that may be helpful is, and I saw it in, in the current contract, or in the new contract for review, as well as the current contract, it stated in there about you providing monthly updates to, to the court, which, to my knowledge, we haven't seen one. And so that may be helpful to the court, rather than at year-end providing a letter with all of this stuff, so that they know what you're working on every month. This is how much research we did. This is who we spoke with. This is who we lobbied with. This is, you know, what Kayla sent us from Commissioner Perdola, and this is what we found, so that they can see, you know, the activity. Because I think that's really what's driving, what's going to drive the decision.
Absolutely. And I'm glad that she brought that up. You know, a business relationship is, is kind of like a, a personal relationship. We have those monthly reporting, it's accountability. It holds us accountable. But those visits in between the, the presentation, also developing that communication and that relationship. So Jeffrey, if you and I are visiting, and we're, you got this need, but we talked about it already. So when I come before the Commissioners' Court, you can say, yes, Ernie and I visited, this is the game plan that we came up with. And that goes for everybody that's on this court. You know, we go visit you in your precinct. We can drive around your precinct, you point to it, you know, some people are visual. I'm a visual guy. And I got to see it sometimes to fully understand it. You know, even though I can read about it, see a video on it, but if I can see it, touch it, I'm more successful that way. And so, you know, what we're offering is the improved communication, the accountability of monthly, to come before the court to do a presentation, to provide a written report of what we're doing. You know, we get it. We, we got some sharpening of our saw that we got to do on your behalf.
And I understand your [inaudible], but to me and my precinct, that $350,000 hot oil distributor truck is like a $3 million deal to you. So even though it's only $350,000, it's very important to my precinct to improve the roads in the whole county. So it's very disappointing for me to find out that I was blown off.
I think that way to address that is the communication, Commissioner. I mean, I think that we all want to get those pictures, you know, with the blown-up check. And, and, you know, that way you can take that back to your constituents, and it's the feel-good thing, it's the, the fruits of our labor. We want to share that with you, too.
Ernie, I, I think that the trips that we took there and the doors you opened were great. I'm not going to dispute that. But I'm going to tell you that I'm not going to dispute one thing that any of these Commissioners have said today. Not one. I'm going to say it, I've said it before, we live in a poor county. We maintain our budget balance that we need to have to maintain. Something happens for eight months. We're not as fortunate as Carne County, who has $100 million cash in the bank. Atascosa has quite a bit themselves, Wild Loopy County. All the surrounding counties around us have far more funding than we have. We kind of cringe, especially, I know the Commissioners, when one of their machineries breaks down, it's, it's quite a bit, and it digs into their limited funding. What little funding that we do get from our ad valorem taxes and, and access, we always try to push it back to the services to the community, which could be road and bridge and other services. So all of us here should be good stewards of our budget. I mean, we have, we can, I know that the, that the Pierceall Shale is going to hit here, and it's going to change this world, but we don't have it right now. We just don't have it. And I, I, again, I'm going to leave it entirely up to the court. That's why we're here. Again, they're the leaders of the community. And so with that, I've said my piece.
Thank you, Judge.
I'll make a motion to table this item until it can be reviewed by counsel and asked them to make a recommendation at the next moment.
Okay. Motion to table made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. All right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, the motion to table is granted. We move to agenda item number seven. Ms. Brenda Trevino, County Auditor, discuss and possible action on contract and standard form and agreement between Wilson County and PPK for the architectural services for the new Wilson County Expo Arena.
Yes, Judge. So this is just the standard agreement. The court has already, had already approved the relationship with PPK, Architectural Firm, for the Expo Arena. This contract has been thoroughly reviewed by our county attorney's office. I, I will say, and Commissioner King and Judge certainly can speak to this as well, the amount of work that PPK has done already on this project. We've had multiple meetings with them, and Fernando Flores, who is our, our go-to person as well. So this is the standard form of agreement between the owner and the architect. It's, it's quite a bit of pages, but it's your standard language, to which Evelyn has reviewed and...
Ms. [inaudible], any comments?
No, I, I need to review it, and I have to say that you presented it from, it's been very helpful, knowing that we don't have a lot of these contracts. They pointed out several issues that might be of concern to our county because of the funding and our size. And Brenda and I reviewed some of those options to come up with the best, make sure that there's adequate insurance, that the funding is correct, that the amount that's going to be paid is within budget. So, you know, I think that they're, they're ready to go. They've been very accessible, and so I would recommend that the contract be approved.
And just as a reminder to the court as well, you had already approved their fee, their fee schedule. This is just the, the standard contract to finalize the documents.
I'll entertain a motion from the court.
I'll make a motion to go to PPK for Architectural Services of the new Wilson County Expo Arena.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Do you have any other discussion regarding agenda item number seven?
Yes. I do not believe that this has been procured properly.
That's the architect.
This is, is that a Seymour contract, or is that an architect contract? I mean, I didn't see the contract.
That's the architect contract. You're referring to the construction contract, which is next in the agenda.
All right. So that is strictly, may I see it, please?
They're separate. One is just architectural services.
Is this for construction services, or?
That's the architectural services that y'all approved back.
Right. But we already had a contract with them, so that's what I'm asking. Why are we doing another contract?
No, no, no. You approved, that, this is just the formalization of bringing the contract to the court for signature. You had already approved PPK, you approved their fee schedule. I'm just bringing the contract for signature to the court.
But, I mean, they've been working for how many months now?
Because you approved their fee schedule. This, this is all of the wording related to the actual standard form of agreement. And they started working, I believe, I don't know, it's probably been two months, maybe?
About two months.
It's not construction.
That is not construction, no.
This is only design?
Yes.
They didn't have a civil engineer?
Do they have a civil engineer? I, I do not know if they have a civil engineer. I, I believe they did. I mean, we, we are knee-deep into the, the plan, so I would imagine that a civil engineer was, yeah, was involved.
All right. Motion's been made, seconded. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. All those against, nay.
I abstain, Judge. I'm not familiar enough with this. We haven't provided enough information. It seems like we're, I don't know why it took us two months to put a contract to, and somebody's already basically finished with their work. I just think things aren't moving properly.
All noted, Commissioner. Thank you. Motion passes. All right. Where do you need my signature on this?
I'll, I'll get your signature, Judge, just in a sec.
All right. Agenda item number eight. We have Brenda Trevino, County Auditor, discuss take possible action on contract and standard form of agreement between the Wilson County and Spa Glass for construction of new Wilson County Expo Arena.
Okay. This is, this took some time for us to gather. We've had multiple meetings with Spa Glass, which is the general contractor that you awarded for the new construction. We did receive their fee summary with four different options, along with a copy of their general conditions of contract for construction, along with the A133, which is the standard form of agreement. Evelyn and I and Kayla sat with Spa Glass, with the president of Spa Glass, and went over in detail each of the four options. The options were related to their fee summaries. They do have an anticipated budget not to exceed $4 million. And so we went through each option in detail, related to pre-construction fees and construction fees, which you should have received a copy of that last week as well. But after all of the clarification and a couple of minor changes, it is being recommended that we go with option one, which is a pre-construction fee of .50% or 20, which equates to $20,000, and a construction fee of 6.75%, which is $270,000, for a total of $290,000. And that is assuming that the A133 and the A201 are agreeable as submitted, which are what Ms. Ron and I thoroughly reviewed and, and met over. The other two, other three options were at a higher rate, and those were if we were to have exceptions in their contract, which meant, for example, if we accepted or removed, I'll give you an example, Article 7.2. So for example, 7.2 is regarding labor rates or labor costs. So it refers to wages or salaries of construction workers directly employed by the construction manager to perform the construction of the work outside or with the owner's prior, prior approval. So that is something that we had to get clarification on, because we are using federal funding. We needed to ensure that Spa Glass understood, to which they did, because it was written in the RFQ, that they would be following all two... in the RFQ, that they would be following all 2 CFR 200 federal guidelines, as it's related to using federal funding. So, the change that they did without having to use that exception was adding the verbiage into the document that reads that they will follow all federal procedures related to 2 CFR 200. And so, after Evelyn reviewed all of each of the options, she recommended that option one was in the best interest of the county. So, what, in response to, I believe, what Commissioner Martin is going to bring up, what I'm asking the court is for your approval in the motion to approve the construction method of a CEMAR, which is a construction manager at risk, which would then coincide with the contract that we've presented before you.
Ms. Yarone, any comments, ma'am?
No, I just want to clarify those options. They gave us the option to remove certain provisions, and that would raise the price of the contract, because those provisions allowed them to have a little more flexibility. But going through each provision, I think it's in the bestest interest of the county to go with the first option, which is a lower, the lower price. One of those options, like Brenda said, was the labor standards. If we remove that, then we would have to monitor all the payments made to each employee. We don't have the manpower, and it would cost us more to do that. So, as long as they're following federal standards, then that was fine. The other concern was that there is a savings clause. If this project comes in under budget, one of those clauses was that we would pay an additional ninety, $80,000, I believe, if it came in under budget. Well, it is anticipated that it will not come under budget that much, and so, the clause provides that they're to get, I believe it's a 30 percent of any savings, which we anticipate would be much less than the $80,000. So, that was not profitable for the county. I think the other issue had to deal-
With insurance.
-with insurance and the fact that they would secure the proper insurance for the project without the county having to go and secure that insurance on our own, as long as it met with our standards. So, those provisions that we are leaving in does meet with the county's standards. It is a savings to the county, and so, I believe that that first option is probably best after reviewing those provisions.
I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number eight, and then we'll hear discussion. Is there any specific way, I'm reading through the way it's on here?
I believe, let's see.
Well, the CM, the one CEMAR is not on there.
Yes, but that's okay. I spoke with Evelyn about it, so I would ask, as it's read on the contract, to accept the construction manager at risk contract with Spa Glass.
All right, okay. I wrote that down, construction manager at risk. And that would be a single?
One single motion, yes, sir.
Take a motion that we accept the construction agreement with construction manager at risk clause with Spa Glass for construction of the new Wilson County Expo Arena.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner King. Is there any other discussion regarding agenda item number eight?
Yes. So, I believe that this has been improperly procured. The procurement law says that the court shall select the best construction procurement method. The court has not done that. Says the court will call for bids. The court did not, well, it was done, no, actually, it was not done. It was not an item on the agenda. The way that it was advertised in the paper was a general contractor, but then, when you went and pulled the documents, it said construction manager at risk. The attorneys that I have spoken to have said that we did not follow procedure. That's my statement.
Ms. Yarone?
Well, I'm not really sure what the problem was. I think it was sent out for bids.
The problem is, is there's a separate statute if we do not use the lowest, I mean, not the lowest, but if we do not just do general bidding. If we do a construction manager at risk, design builder, any of those, there's other special procurement laws that apply.
Well, I believe the bid was already accepted. Wasn't it already voted on and accepted?
Yes, let me, let me-
Well, I mean, and that's, and that's, and that's what I explained to Ms. Trevino back in October, was that this is all done, but it wasn't done. I said, I think you can fix this if you go back and we get a presentation and everybody agrees that CEMAR is the best option, ratify that action, and then ratify the action that it was advertised, and that has not been done.
So, that is what I brought to the court today. So, let me, I want to clarify what Commissioner Martin is referring to. So, several, several months ago, we went out for requests for qualifications for a general contractor for the shelter of last resort and expansion of the Expo Center. It was at that time that we decided, that we found out that we were not going to receive the money from De La Cruz's office for the adjoining potential building of the Wellness Center, as well as the 1.2 million that's being earmarked from the General Land Office. So, we put both of those projects on hold, and I went to Judge Whitman to say, we need to now shift our focus to the Expo Center. At that time, we had already put out the advertisement in search of a general contractor just for remodeling. We were up against a deadline, and so, we, in one of the responses that we received after we all met with the general contractors who came for question and answer in our walkthrough, one of the responses to the questions that we received is that we were changing the method. Now, Commissioner Martin is correct. I did not know, I was not aware that I had to come to the court to get permission to, or approval for that specific method. And so, while we were already in the process, we had already selected, the court had already approved, based on all of the qualifications, approved Spa Glass after we thoroughly sat with the scoring committee. We brought everything back to the court. You approved Spa Glass as a general contractor for this major project. When Commissioner Martin came to me and approached me at that morning of court to say exactly what he's mentioned now, my question to him is, why didn't he notify me that before court? So, then when he said, well, it can be fixed by coming to the court and we can ratify the method, that is what I'm presenting to you today with the contract, because I wanted to be sure that you understood that we are up against a deadline, because the federal funding has to be obligated by December 31st. We don't have, because we only meet the second and fourth Mondays of the month, I felt that it was best use of your time and my time to go through all of the contract provisions, bring the contract to the court, and ask the court to accept the method of construction manager at risk while approving the contract. And that's what I'm presenting to you today.
Yeah, but that's not what the agenda item says. And also-
And that's what I referred to Ms. Ron on Friday.
You know what? That's fine. I'm not going to argue legal issues here. I think, I think we've taken too many steps. I think people have been made aware. I think people know. I think action could have been taken to fix this before we got to here. This has not been a transparent process.
It absolutely has been, Commissioner Martin, because what difference would it have made had we ratified that then or now?
Okay, well, let me ask you this question. Why did you tell the contractors how much money was in, was available in the contract?
Because that is public information, and that is being transparent, Commissioner. Yes, it is.
That, that is not necessary. That is confidential information until the contract is awarded. I mean, now every-
We have a budget in the contract.
I understand that.
How is that not transparent?
That's not, okay. I'm not going to argue with-
No, but I'm asking, because you're claiming that I'm sharing confidential information, and when we're talking about taxpayers' money that needs to be made transparent-
Right, but you're negotiating a contract, so it's confidential information until you have negotiated a contract.
There is no contract negotiation. You approved a $4 million budget, which is in the contract. That is not being-
But that was discussed at the pre-bid meeting.
And that is what's in the contract.
Okay, well, it shouldn't have been. You know, you don't tell a contractor how much money you have to spend, so what-
You certainly do, Commissioner, because we're not going to go out of budget. The contractor is very much aware that we are not to exceed $4 million, and if that means we come under budget, I'm fully confident that that, that they would be fair enough and honest enough with the county to come under budget if it was reasonably able to do so.
Yeah. So, why is there an added paragraph in the contract for owner-direct hire contractors? What is that for?
I, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Tell us what page, Commissioner, so we all can look at. So, I have a question while the Commissioner's doing his research. We don't ratify this today. What happens?
If the contract is not approved today?
What happens to the funding? Does it kill the project?
It would, it would stop the project, and the court would have to call a special court before December 31st to obligate $4 million that need to be obligated by December 31st.
If we don't, then what happens?
We would have to send back the unspent American Rescue Plan money.
It's Article 10.1.1. It says, "The owner shall require the owner-direct hire contractors or vendors to coordinate their work with and comply with Spa Glass project safety requirements."
Safety requirements? I, that, I can't speak to the contract.
It's on the bottom, nine point, I think it's 9.1.1 or something. Down to the bottom.
On the bottom, okay.
I mean, obviously, Spa Glass had that added in there.
9.1.1?
I don't know. Commissioner, you said all the way to the bottom.
Right here. Oh, ten, sorry. Ten, ten, or 10.1, yeah, 10.1.1.
Okay. 10.1.1. "The owner shall require all owner-direct hire contractors or vendors to coordinate their work with and comply with Spa Glass project safety requirements." Is that a, that's a safety issue that they say they want? I mean, I'm not a-
We tell them we're planning on hiring our own contractors to do some stuff. That's what, I mean, that's-
It's, it's written in the contract, and that was part of our, in one of our meetings discussion with them, that we would provide a list of local subcontractors for their consideration to receive bids from, and then they would notify us of the outcome of that and what they would recommend. Now, that particular, I'm not a legal counsel, but I would, I interpret that to mean that there are any contractors that they utilize would follow their safety procedures. Is that-
Yes, and they represented that they would seek out local contractors-
That's right.
-because that was important to this court, and that they would actively-
And that's, that's wonderful, and that's great, but that's saying, that's implying that we may hire somebody on our own accord. We're going to pay them directly.
No, no. They would try to secure local contractors as part of their contract, not, I mean, we would not be doing-
No, but I mean, that specifically says that if we hire someone to do work there, they have to follow their safety rules. That's what I'm asking. Are we planning to hire somebody to do stuff, or Spa Glass doing everything?
No, I, I-
We are not. Spa Glass does.
Spa Glass, that's part of their fee, correct.
Yeah, and that'll be in their contracts with their subcontractors, that they have to follow their safety policies and procedures of Spa Glass.
Correct, and I believe that's why it takes the risk off of the county, because by agreeing to those terms and conditions, the county is not held liable for that, because we will not be directly employing any vendor on our own. It's all being managed through Spa Glass, and that is the purpose of the CEMAR.
Let me let the other two Commissioners look at that and study that. My understanding was that they were going to try to hire as many local contractors to do this job, but we're out of that. We'd just prefer that the funding be-
In fact, Mr. Smith requested from us to be, to provide, and this was just on our latest meeting, which was on Friday or Thursday, for us, the county, to provide them a list, once the contract is in place, to provide them a list of local subcontractors, and they would reach out to everyone. Once we get to that point, we're not even to that point yet, but once we get to that point, they would certainly do that.
I don't need to go over discussing the county trying to take anything on as far as-
Well, I don't either, but that's why, I mean, you know, everybody likes to throw stuff in contracts.
No, and I don't-
I don't know why that came up.
I'm sorry, sir. I don't anticipate the county will, will go rogue and be hiring their own.
No, I certainly don't want to.
For some reason, it could be maintenance, cleanup, it could be anything that's really ancillary to that contract. It's to assure that it's safety requirements.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know what it's for. I just wondered if we had intention to hire people to do stuff.
We do not.
No.
We don't anticipate it.
Absolutely not, no. No. Okay. Motion's been made, and seconded. Is there any other discussion regarding agenda item number eight? Hear none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. All those against, nay?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Martin, a no. Motion passes. We've moved to agenda item number nine. Ms. Lucerato permitting a development director, 9A utility permit, one permit, 785 Three Oaks, WSC Precinct 2, 2171 County Road 201, review and approve.
Yes, good morning. This utility permit was turned in by Three Oaks Water Supply. I believe Commissioner King has revised the permit and gone to the site to see the location. They are proposing the three-fourth water line with a two-inch density casing for this boring project.
Yes, I've already driven on site. Everything looks good. I've already talked to Three Oaks. So, I make a motion to approve permit 785 for Three Oaks Water Supply, 2171 County Road 201.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Do we have any other discussion regarding 9A1? Hear none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay? Eyes have it, motion passes. We move to 9B1, non-standard plant variances, one Longhorn Road 94, Tiffany Allen, discuss and take action.
Yes, Ms. Allen was here. She just stepped out.
There she is, okay.
King, if you have any questions. This was given a favorable recommendation by the review committee. Ms. Allen proposes to split two acres out of her existing track to sell. So, this track used to belong to her mother, and it's for financial relief.
You're saying three?
Yes.
How large is the parrot track?
Did you want to come up here?
The larger-
Come on up and state your name after.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Tiffany Allen. The larger track is 10.24 acres.
Total today, not with the two cut out?
I'm sorry?
Today, it's 10.24 acres. You're proposing to cut out two, so there'll be 8.24.
Yes, sir. And we already have this survey as well. Yes, sir, and we already have this survey as well.
Is this a subdivision?
No. No, it's off Longhorn.
So, I get, I guess our general deduction was developed under the 10, greater than 10-acre exemption, so it didn't come through our subdivision process? Or is it just a 10-acre tract that was on that road?
Just a 10-acre tract that was there and she's splitting out the two. The only particular thing about it was that it used to be, uh- So, you said- Sideways and then they replatted it or- Yeah, it was replatted in 2016. Originally, we owned, um, two tracts, both at 10.24 each. Um, we owned 92 and 96, but we sold 92 last April and we only kept 96.
But as a tract, it is in a subdivision, whatever that was, but go ahead.
Um, and then we only have, um, 96 now and we want to just cut out the two acres on the far right corner towards, uh, 436. It was originally part of the Eclecto Creek, um, ranchettes, if that helps.
I'll entertain a motion on Agenda Item B, 9B1.
This has received a favorable review from the Review and Development Board. I'll make a motion that we approve the non-standard platte variance, uh, Longhorn Road 94.
Motion been made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion on 9B1? Hear none? Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
You too, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, move to 9C1. Subdivision Hondo Ridge. Discuss and take action on acceptance of dedication and conveyance of roads. Uh, you want to do both of them?
Commissioner, they're in your precinct?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do both. C1 and C2. Discuss, take action on release of letter of credit.
Uh, Commissioner Perdola performed the final inspection for Hondo Ridge alongside their developer and signed off on it. Um, before you, you have the dedication and conveyance of roads for that subdivision. And they've gone, they've done their two years for their letter of credits, so their letter, if the roads are accepted, then the letter of credit is due to be released. The representative for Hondo Ridge is here. If you have any questions, mister.
Y'all have any questions? True Grit Partners LLC. I like the name. John Wayne. All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on 9C1 and 2.
I'll make a motion. I've been out and, and, uh, inspected the roads, so I make a motion on the acceptance of dedication and conveyance of the roads in Hondo Ridge and also to release the letter of credit on Hondo Ridge.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner King. We have any other discussion on 9C1 and 2? Hear none? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, eyes have it. Motion passes. Move to Agenda Item Number 10. We have our county sheriff, Jim Stewart, Sheriff's Office Monthly Progress Report. You're making me hurt by watching him walk like that. She and I both have the same ailment.
Well, hopefully I don't fall down before I'm finished. Hey. All right, uh, for the month of November, uh, total calls, 1,723, which gave us a total year-to-date of 1,700, 17,989 total calls from the sheriff's office in, uh, 2024 so far, averaging about 1,700 calls a month, give or take. See, livestock calls for the last two months, they've been up. November was again the 81. Of course, we've been dry. Fences are being stressed because they're trying to find anything they can to eat, so they've been getting out on a regular basis. Uh, unfortunately, looks like we got a long winter because, uh, last year during the winter, we had 87 and, 87 in February, March. Since we're dry now, we're probably going to have some, another couple of months of, uh, livestock being out running loose. Animal complaints, 30, which is just about average. We're running about 32, give or take 32 to 33 a month. Mental health calls, 21, averaging about 17 a month, so little over, but still within average. Total arrests for the month, 44. Year-to-date, 437 arrests by patrol. Uh, let's see, security checks, 211. Patrol bias, 624. Basically, that's 8,800, uh, proactive, uh, interactions, uh, from the SO, uh, trying to check crime before it gets there. Uh, traffic enforcement, 358 total traffic enforcement, code enforcement stops for the month. Uh, just about average. We're averaging about 340 a month.
Sheriff, before you leave that item-
Yes, sir.
So, is your code compliance, is that going to include burn ban tickets, uh-
It's going to include burn ban, animal control, anything that comes out of the ordinance. It's, it's figured in there. I can't, if you want, I can have them separate those in the future.
I think it would be-
If you, if you'd like it, I can probably separate our county ordinance from regular traffic.
I think it would be good, only from the standpoint of it's, it appears, at least over the last couple of weeks, that burn ban violations have maybe gone down a little bit. But I know our question was, was how, how well was that being enforced? And understanding that, I think, helps us know what to do on these burn bans.
Gotcha. Oh, we can do that. CID for the month, uh, month of November, 75 new cases. Uh, total, brings total cases, uh, 1,431 for the year, uh, cleared 300, so we're cleared about a third of them, give or take. This month, we had six to the county attorney, six to the district attorney, one to juvenile. Knock on wood, juvenile's set being, uh, fairly low. Let's see, cleared by arrest. That's just the stats for those that are cleared. Uh, criminal interdiction, uh, 26 felony arrests in November, uh, 24 misdemeanor arrests, a total of 50 arrests by, uh, OLS in the month of November, 109 traffic stops, two weapons seized, one stolen vehicle recovered, and two undocumented, uh, aliens returned to Border Patrol. I think we had a two-day operation with DPS here this month. We ended up with about three or four, I think, went back, uh, to Border Patrol this month. They'll be in next month's stats. Uh, for the month, narcotics seized for the month of November, 10.35 grams of meth, 2.47 ounces of marijuana, uh, 57 ounces of THC, all basically vape, vape stuff. Anything else, sir?
Hey, Sheriff, we, we're trying to get together with Ms. Buck. I know we're missing-
And me and you and her, your schedule, my schedule, hers, not, but with the holidays here, I figure I'll probably try to make something first part of January, after, after January 1. Before, may, try, hopefully before our first Commissioners Court and-
Okay, so the court knows we're trying, are both trying to meet with a lady who might try to resolve our-
Help, help with our-
Help with our animals.
Issues, animal ordinance stuff. And, uh, she seems to be very willing to want to do it and do it for the right reason and, uh, but her, her schedule doing what she does-
Right.
And ours is, have not blended very well for the last month and we haven't been able to connect.
I'm, I'll text her again, let her know that we talked about it, but we're still on the radar to meet with her.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Sheriff, I'd like to thank you, my precinct 3, Coswell, and our driveway and permitting inspector for responding and issuing citations on a couple of illegal dumping where they dumped trailer truck loads of gravel in the middle of our county road in my precinct. Uh, I think that if word gets around that the county is not going to tolerate this, it's going to help tremendously.
True.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was it good gravel or bad gravel?
I saw that, I saw one was just last week, right? The other day I saw a caller, we, they had it dumped right out in the middle of the road.
It drove up one morning on 319, just off 307, it had eight 18-wheeler loads dumped in the middle of the road. And the guy didn't even have a driveway. Well, I'd think this, either one of them-
Did have driveway permit.
Wow, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
You're, you're thinking.
Well, I, I was thinking because whenever he said 319, it topped the hill and had a UPS truck. There are so many dangerous places on that particular road and to dump road material in it, uh-
Doesn't make a lot of common sense.
On that, with eight, eight loads of gravel dumped in the road, I'm trying to, I just go up, I'm getting out of the truck, there's an 18-wheeler sitting here, a lady drives up behind me. No more than I get out of the pickup, blowing her horn, telling me she's late for work. Wait just a minute till I get the situation under control. And believe it or not, she tried to drive around my-
Oh, yes.
Bar ditch.
Oh, yes, because I'm late for work.
And was going to turn me in for making her late for work.
There you go.
The life of a Commissioner, right?
Some people's kids.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Anything else, gentlemen? Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Sheriff. Stay safe.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Move to Agenda Item Number 11. Uh, Ms. Dawn Barnett, Tax Assessor Collector for report. She's not here, but she did submit a report. Uh, Commissioners, that's for your viewing. I'll give you a couple of minutes to look at that. Uh, we move to Agenda Item Number 12. Ms. Christina Moots, County Treasurer. Discuss, take action on the County Treasurer's financial report.
Good morning. You'll see in your binder, as well as emailed to you, the November Treasurer's report that I am here to present. As always, the report remains the same. It will list in the beginning our checking accounts with all the debits and credits, as well as the CDs that we have. Then followed by our investments at the beginning and ending balances, as well as the interest rate that we still are holding on to as high as we can.
Does the bank notify you when they change the interest rate on any of these?
They do not. I go ahead and double-check whether it's online or a statement or anything like that. Uh, that goes as far as the investment accounts as well. I double-check those.
Did you notice after the last time the feds dropped the rates, did they drop their rates a little bit?
Mm-hmm, yeah. This one, this month, so every month it's been very small, but this last month, yeah, it was significant.
It is what it is.
It is.
The drops are not that significant?
Uh, this last time it was higher than it's been. Um, so we were staying in the fives for a pretty good while. So, now the last time it was 4.88, which is not, it's still, hopefully it just stays in the fours for a pretty good while now. Fingers crossed. Um, and then followed by outstanding debt that we have. No payments, obviously, until, what's the next one we have in February? Um, for the, um, the bond that we're still doing, as well as lease purchases. Uh, the last one, the, was with Precinct 3, is how I have it coded, with the wheel loader that's been paid off, that I was notified. So, we still have two that will begin to be listed on there. And then followed by what's titled, of course, at the top, the Treasurer's Monthly Report. And this is an FI report that lists each fund that we have, beginning and ending balances, and any debits and credits that took place for that month of November.
It's going in, in this next calendar year, you're going to go out. Is it, is that when we're going out for bids?
Yes, I'm working on that right now, um, because it is May, so hopefully by, definitely the beginning of the year, the process of that. Yes, sir. Yeah, for this month of December, I'm going to try till the end of the month before, but we've got a few more days to get everything typed up and finalized. Definitely the beginning of, uh, January. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions, Commissioners? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept Treasurer's financial report. Agenda Item Number 12.
Make a motion to accept the Treasurer's financial report.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Do we have any other discussion on Agenda Item Number 12? Hear none? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We move to Agenda Item Number 13. Ms. Jaylen Botterford, Human Resource Specialist. Presentation of Payroll and Personal Affairs.
Good morning.
Morning.
Jennifer Fleming was hired as a deputy clerk for the county clerk's office, making 1893 per hour at $39,359.20 annually effective December 16. Alexa Roberts was hired as a patrol deputy for the sheriff's department, making 2533 per hour or $55,326.32 annually effective December 18. Stephen Orr was promoted to the administrative lieutenant position with the sheriff's department, making $76,118 annually effective December 16. And Mace Martin has resigned from his position as the assistant jail administrator with the sheriff's department, effective December 20.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Botterford? Thank you. Move to Agenda Item Number 14. Ms. Brenda Travina, County Auditor. Discuss and take action on county bills.
I handed an amount to you, but I, I wanted to come up here just for, uh, I've got a couple of things to note, just for transparency reasons. The total number of bills, um, that I've reviewed and approved is 807,000- The total number of bills, um, that I've reviewed and approved is eight hundred and seven thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Um, so I do want to bring a couple of things to your attention. Um, on page, on page three, um, under the county sheriff's department, oh five six oh, you're going to see a line item there, uh, for an invoice to Boswell Aleif Ford, um, in the amount of ninety-two thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars under his new vehicle purchase. Um, I wanted to explain to you what that is. Um, so in the course of working with Enterprise Fleet Management, um, the sheriff was in search of a transport van. Um, and Enterprise, Enterprise's availability of a transport van wouldn't be for three to, I think, three to five months before it became available. They did find one at a dealer, but we would have, we would, we were going to have to buy it directly. So sheriff asked me if I could, uh, put some pencil or paper to figure out if we were to purchase it outright out of his four hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's budgeted in his vehicle line item, if, if he would still have enough money left to maintain the leases. Um, so I got with Enterprise, um, we calculated it out and, and it, he did have sufficient enough money in there. Um, Boswell Ford is part of the TIPS program, uh, which we are a co, a purchasing co-op, uh, so we did not have to go out for bids, so in full transparency, I just wanted to let the court know that that's what that ninety-two thousand dollars is for, uh, the purchase of a prisoner transport van that's fully outfitted and, and readily available.
It is a much-needed vehicle, the one they're driving now, I think is a liability to the county to be transporting people. And would you agree with me, Sheriff? Okay.
Yes, sir.
But also, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Enterprise was a little afraid about, they didn't want the, to provide that van as a liability, correct, Sheriff?
They found it for us, they just weren't, their, their legal team would not allow them to sell it outright to us and they could not assume the liability on a lease. That is correct. Um, the next, uh, item I just wanted to point out to you on page five was a purchased to nap Chevrolet in Houston. Um, that does say vehicle purchase precinct three, that is actually the truck for the chipper that was purchased. This is being purchased out of the American Rescue Plan money as well. Um, and the amount of ninety-nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Commissioner King and Commissioner Perdola, uh, drove to Houston, uh, to look at the vehicle, make sure it's exactly what the county needed. There was not one to be found anywhere, uh, back several months ago when, uh, you, the court, approved for the purchase of a vehicle, um, to coincide with the purchase of the chipper that we, we, we bought. Uh, we finally found one, uh, that was ready to go. So Commissioner Perdola and Commissioner King, uh, recommended it and, uh, since you had already approved it, uh, we went ahead and issued the purchase order and I do believe that it will be ready for pickup sometime this week.
It should be picking it up on Monday.
Very good. And then the.
Now, we kept that at one hundred and ten?
I believe so, yes, sir. Yeah. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out to you is on page six, uh, which is the Emergency Operations Center. Uh, we did receive the first invoice from Broaddus and Associates, which is the general contractor for the Emergency Operations Center at two hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-one cents. And then, um, two additional invoices for RVK Architecture for the same project.
Hang on, I got a question. So on my credit card, I was, when I was approving bills, seems like there's one item that's missing on there.
On your Citibank statement, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's, um, for the collection event on, whenever that was, November, was it second or fourth or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I purchased the tacos for all of our roadhands that came and worked that morning. Um, I expect that that's a county expense and I expect that the county will pay for that, so, and I don't think that's on there.
Okay, did you turn in the receipt for reimbursement for the breakfast tacos?
It's not a reimbursement, it's, it should be charged to my credit.
Oh, it was on the card, okay.
Yeah. There, it was, there was a line on the paper and I couldn't tell if it was through it, but I was remembering, it was like a hundred and twenty-four dollars and I don't see that on there.
Okay, I'll confirm that with Kristen to make sure, but if it was on your credit card statement, then she, she would have included it in here.
I want to make it clear that this is something that we do for our staff because to come, it is mandated that they come and work on that day and that's just one way besides the overtime they're going to make to, so they don't have to get up quite so early, we provide them breakfast.
Yeah, I believe that's been the case for every, we pass it around, every precinct sponsors it and so that means it comes around every two years and I purchase breakfast tacos.
So is, so is all the other guys. I'll make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of, if I can get to that last page again. Eight hundred and seven thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-two, thirty-three cents, provided that it includes the breakfast tacos that are charged to my precinct credit card.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have any other discussions regarding agenda item number fourteen? Here none, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Ayes have it, motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Listen, adjourn.
Seconded, motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? We are adjourned. It is eleven fifteen AM.